You said you're good to go. Okay, looks like we're good to go. We'll get city council meetings started tonight. Thank you, everybody for coming and joining us here in council chambers or on television and SFCN or YouTube. We'll get started right away with how we always do in Spanish Fork with a motivational thought and prayer and the pledge. Councilmember Euler has the motivational thought prayer and Councilman Carden has the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with the opening prayer. Father in heaven, we are grateful to be able to meet tonight, be able to discuss the items on our agenda, be able to take care of the business of the city. We're thankful for the community that we live in, for the residents that serve and volunteer in our community, grateful for our public safety that work hard to protect us and keep us safe and bless them and their families. Guide and direct our thoughts tonight as we discuss discuss budget items and other things that we can be able to make correct decisions that will benefit all that all that live here. We are grateful for our responsibilities and the opportunities we have to serve. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Everyone please arise and say the pledge allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Follow up to previous comments, anything from manager Perrin's staff about the last two weeks ago meeting?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments today, actually. We had we had a number of questions posed and expressed in our last council meeting and I want to follow up to to them. First off, Mr. Stanley, well, I won't bring up names again, but there was a gentleman that came in and asked some questions about fencing the Mill Race Canal. We have talked about, actually, we have talked about that as a possibility. There are some elements about the Mill Race Canal that we can't really deal with and one of them is the possibility of it getting piped. It's an external group that that controls that canal. But we do have a project in this year's budget where we are relocating the greenhouse. You guys will remember I was talking about that. It's in that general area. It will need a fence around it as well. With that conversation, Dale will be building a fence near that area. Dale is reaching out, Dale and Bart are reaching out to the irrigation company that owns that and are having some conversations. Can we take that fence and bring it around the head gate structure and what would that look like for their operations? And that would seal off that area for a couple of years while they investigate potentially piping it. So we think that's that's actually a viable opportunity. It probably would add literally only a few thousand dollars to the project to add that fence structure. So that that's a possibility. We're not sure yet if we will be able to do all of that, but but we appreciated that feedback and we're actually going to look into that.
Hey Seth, just a question. So where was that at again? I just want to make sure. I understand where was that location?
Yeah, so would you mind jumping on to like Dawns Field area, Swenson Sports Park? It's called the Mill Race Canal. It's the canal that runs adjacent to the fairgrounds and then under Main Street behind Dawns Field and and kind of by some.
Shane pretends he hit a few balls in there. I don't know if one ever made it.
They did. I also got thrown in there a few times as a young freshman sophomore. Probably by Chris.
So, like I said, our project would bring the fence to within ten or twenty feet of that space. And so yeah, and so in the kind of in the bottom diagonal corner, right by the blue hip in that area. So we would look at wrapping the fence around the head gate structure, which is that white cement thing right at the bottom.
So would that Seth, would that close off any access? Would you still be able to access or get to the parking lot from this side or would that close that off entirely?
So our project that we plan on doing the greenhouse would enclose this area here. And and the only way to access it should be from over here, which you would still be able to.
You'd still be able to.
Yeah, there is a gate that would you you can block off, but it's not a very secure gate. It's more of a vehicle gate. You could access the still through here, but it would, if we did something like this, putting a fence kind of here, it would make it so these homes wouldn't have immediate access to that to that pipe. Any other questions on that? Okay, the other one, another one, another gentleman asked a couple of questions and and I think his question about the farmer's market actually, the Chamber of Commerce answered that one a couple of moments later, so I don't need to address that one. There was a question about some putting sidewalks in different areas where development hasn't happened and and we've taken a quick look at at the area. Speaking of Highway fifty-one and Spanish Fork Parkway. Generally speaking, the I the concept was, the concern expressed was that from this area here to this area here, there aren't, it's not a complete sidewalk area and that is absolutely correct and we typically don't have, we don't put sidewalks in until development happens. If we did, then residents would be paying the cost of of everybody's sidewalks everywhere before development happened and and the model that we do follow is that the project puts a sidewalk in front of their house. So I paid for the sidewalk in front of my house, probably with the price of my house. You didn't. I did. But you also paid for the price of the sidewalk in front of your house. And this business will pay for the price of the sidewalk in front of the business. We do own the right of way in these areas and so scraping it down, getting rid of the weeds and possibly putting down some road base or some millings actually is a possibility. We wouldn't need to do any property acquisition. It wouldn't be a sidewalk, but it could be walkable and off the off the roadway surface. We think we can do that for relatively little to maybe twenty thousand dollars on the high end.
Is there is there a way to sort of do like a PID? You pick an area that needs a sidewalk improvement. That group, that those community members say, we want to tax ourselves a little bit more to put in that kind of infrastructure. Could that happen?
It's what is it called?
Used to be SID. It's now a special assessment area?
Yeah, yeah. So you can do that. We had an SID. Boy, it about ended when I got here. So it probably ended, say, oh five-ish. We had an SID in the Leland area because they in the late eighties or early nineties, their wells were running dry, so they needed to put in a bunch of water infrastructure. And so they did an assessment on themselves, put in the water infrastructure and then they paid for it through through whatever the rate structure was. Yes. Shorter answer is, we could do something like that. A group could do that and the city can facilitate it.
Okay, so if that community right there said, you know what? I mean, I don't know what the sidewalk is going to be, a million dollars or whatever it is, you divide that by two hundred homes over the course of five years, you probably get a pretty cheap sidewalk.
Yeah, the downside.
Then the theory still applies that I'm paying for the sidewalk that I'm using in front of.
Perhaps. Yeah, the downside to something like this in this this area is we're starting to see some site plans say for this one and and that may happen inside of two years. And and you might have to rip up the sidewalk in order to do the work and then they would put it back. But I think that, yeah, you could do something like that. Do you want us as staff to look at doing at least the minimum scraping it and putting down some kind of a rock base off the road, but inside the right of way lines? And or maybe millings?
I think before you do that specific area, it would maybe be a good idea to assess the entire city to see if there are other priorities besides just this one.
I was like, please don't make us do all of that. Okay, yeah.
We had one resident come and ask about this specific area, but there may be somewhere else in the city that's a higher priority that if we're going to spend money that we make sure it's the right place.
I guess I guess this area, we worked so hard, secured the funding to cross the railroad and it was a vehicle crossing. So the stress of getting vehicles down to this area has certainly has certainly been more of a priority for the city than pedestrians taking taking that. But I but I sympathize with the frustrations of a resident that now had that opened up. And if I wanted to walk or ride my bike, you hit a you hit a place where it ends. So but I think that's a good idea. There's probably are, there could be other priorities where you say target there too.
I think it's because Spanish Fork has done such a great job of providing those amenities throughout the community. When we, when they're not there, they stand out.
Yeah.
You go to some of our surrounding communities and you run into the situation all the time.
Yeah.
You you it's more often, where is there a sidewalk?
Totally.
Yeah.
But you're right, Mayor, that it's, we did focus on getting car traffic out of so that they weren't going through community communities to the east.
Kevin, I like I like your suggestion. I appreciate that because there might be higher priority areas. It's still a pretty long walk for a lot of these residents if they're going to someplace that they're probably going to carry something home. I don't know that anybody's going, say, to Lowe's and buying a two by four. I'm not going to probably tote that two by four home on my own, right? But, you know, getting some groceries or things like that, it probably still is a decent walk. Okay, we can, we, like I said, the the cost of doing some of the things here isn't that much and it wouldn't be a sidewalk, but it might be a passable surface. But we'll look at a few other areas and and maybe we can apply a similar a similar approach. What is nice in this area is we've got the right of way. We wouldn't have to do land acquisition, which that's maybe the biggest hurdle to doing, to solving this problem in other areas is that land acquisition. The last one is a gentleman came and made some comments and expressed concerns about bricks, masonry buildings. I really don't have a great answer to that one, other than we follow, for structures like this, we follow the highest building code standards for a building structure like this. And pretty confident that it's that this building has a higher structural integrity than say, a building that was built in the early nineteen hundreds with unreinforced masonry.
I think I think one of his concerns or questions that he brought up as well is, does the city have an architecture committee? Group that actually approves or comes up with plans. I know in the time that I was on the planning commission, we spent a lot of effort into coming up with architectural designs and what we would approve and not approve. And I don't know if that's something that we want to share because.
I don't think we have the eagle, even the legal grounds to to get into too much architectural standards, right? The legislature's taken that away from cities but for specific types of developments that might occur. So we we really aren't able to get into the legal structures. Dave, anything else you'd add with that?
And I think for non-residential, there still is a lot of, a lot of latitude left at the local level, particularly if there's a, you know, legislative act like a zone change involved. And that's where the planning commission really, really did get engaged, I would say. And probably I would say the same is true for some of the bigger multifamily projects, but when it comes to single family homes, townhomes, no. We don't have the ability to influence architecture really much at all. And by and large, it's something that we've, for the most part, have left to homeowners to decide relative to what materials they want on their homes, that type of thing, you know, maybe a way of what they purchase and and what they remodel and that type of thing.
Yeah, I don't know that we I don't know that we can do it. I don't know, technically, candidly, I'm not sure that we want to. That's a, that's a level of of involvement that do we, do we want to tell people you can use this structure, that structure?
No, I think I think that's the level of the discussion warranted with that concern. Thank you, Manager Perrin. Okay, takes us to Spanish Fork one oh one. Nope, I'm sorry. Skipping way down the agenda there. Yeah, gosh, that was a lot of ways down there, huh? Jack, you've got some recognitions with the one oh one graduates.
We just concluded spring two thousand twenty-five Spanish Fork University. We made a couple of changes, but I thought it went really well. This group that we had this spring, we had about twenty people, several married couples, several parent adult pairs, which was cool. A lot of family in this group. It was a great group. I think there are still tons of people who could benefit from this program. I think this group really proved that to me. With that in mind, we've got a little video showing some of the highlights and then I'll just report on a little bit more and and be done. So yeah, that's just a small piece of the fun we had. The favorite, I had them vote this time on their favorite class. We haven't done that before. We get a lot of feedback, but this time I said, let's just rank them. And I was surprised because police and fire are really popular, really fun nights, but the winner this time was Public Works, the first class in the shop. So that's wastewater, fleet and garbage, water and streets. So that was a great experience for them.
You're telling me that wastewater was better than fire and police?
That's right. You would think number two, but it was number one. So anyway, the thing that I would say in recap that impressed me the most is just this experience, I think, is great for the resident-staff relationship both ways. I think that the residents come and they learn what we do and who we are, that we're reasonable, customer service oriented people who want to help and who work hard. And I think it's good for our staff too. I really noticed that this time is when they work with our residents, I think they're kind of reminded of why we do what we do, you know, and who we serve and that we promote human flourishing. Or as we say in Spanish Fork, that we build and maintain a vibrant city. So a great experience. I'm excited to start again in the fall. Any questions?
Questions for Jack?
For doing it. Everyone loves that.
Jack, is there still, is there a waiting list or I'm curious how popular is it still?
Yeah, it's still popular. I think the way I want to do it this time, we usually reach out kind of as we get closer to all of our alumni first and say, who do you know? Do you have friends, neighbors and family members? But this time I kind of want to earlier get a list of people who might be interested that we'll also revisit later. But yeah, it's still popular. We had more people apply than we could accommodate in the spring and I think that's a good thing. We'll continue to have a lot of people interested, I think. So we switch nights. We do like a, we did Thursday night this time and the fall we'll do Wednesday night to try to catch people that may have an activity on one night of the week and try to get whoever we can. So. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Jack. Okay, perfect. Takes us to public comments, item five on our agenda, anybody from the public that would like to address the mayor and council. Seeing none, we'll go to council comments. We'll start in the middle here. Councilwoman Beck, we went to you first for a while.
No.
Okay, were you prepared?
No. No, I've been thinking about everything. I'm sure someone else will comment on Memorial Day. Is that right with with beautiful pictures? Thank you to our veterans who who displayed such a wonderful, beautiful program on Memorial Day morning at the cemetery. And other than that, I, it looks like Scott's here from our library and he's going to be talking, so I won't say much to that. I think I was just going to say the summer reading program has kicked off. So when when Scott takes over, I'll let him do that. So that's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot. Just wanted to thank our senior sen, uh, senior citizens center. They invited some individuals to a lunch yesterday down at the senior center to recognize those city employees who have gone out of their way to help, help down at the senior center. So they had a lot of individuals from fleet that were there that they invited to lunch that helped keep their their bus and vehicles moving. It's a lot of the new employees that will that will help in the Fit City Center as well. And so just wanted to thank the individuals that made the lunch and put that on for for the city staff. That's all I had, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Euler. Councilman Carden?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. The first is I wanted to again thank the senior center for inviting us down there for one of their last meals of the season. The other thing that I wanted to publicly invite the city council down to Spanish Fork High School between nine and noon is the best time, I've been told, for the next two weeks. So the rest of this week and next week, the youth arts festival is going on. They have over fifteen hundred kids again there, lots of different activities. Just different things. If you are interested, Emily is probably your best contact to to do that or you can just show up and Whitney will take care of you. So
When does it start?
Nine AM is when they had their first classes.
Beginning which day?
They already started. They started yesterday. Yeah, so yesterday was not a good day to go because it's it's a little chaotic on the first day, to say the least, but it's, it is an awesome part of it. They have theater going on, dance, three D printing, which is what my kids wanted to get into and we were too late to sign up, so my kids didn't get into that class. So just a lot of different things that go there. The RAP tax helps pay for that. So thank you to our citizens and then also they they pay a fee to do their classes. So a last thing that I have is we have, and I'm hoping that Councilwoman Beck can help me out, but we do have an airport breakfast, our airport breakfast, is it this Saturday or next Saturday? Do you remember? They do a breakfast every, I think it's the second Saturday of the month, so it's not this Saturday, but next Saturday at the hangar just right after the the main street, after the parking lot and at eight AM.
For some reason, I don't have it on my calendar.
So I think that that's when it is. If it's not correct, Christian will be able to help us out. So reach out to Christian if you have any questions on that. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Carden. I noticed a couple of kids yesterday at the coach pitch game up at Centennial Park that were wearing their youth arts T-shirts, took them off, put on their jerseys, played, played ball. There you go. Pretty good thing. All right, Councilman Took.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have with us this evening our president of the Chamber of Commerce, Kathleen Levis. So come on up, Kathleen.
Hello, everyone. Just a few upcoming events at the Chamber of Commerce. We have a ribbon cutting this Friday at noon at Good Grinds in Salem. It's a new Hawaiian restaurant that joined the chamber over there right off of the one ninety-eight freeway. Really good food. We have a ribbon cutting on June eleventh here in Spanish Fork at Physical Therapy. They're just right down the street, right over here. They're a rehabilitation center here in Spanish Fork, so we'll be celebrating them. We have our second marketing education class on June tenth, which will be held at the Justice Center. That was a really good class, super good information on marketing. He got really, really into it and he's going to go even deeper on this next one. So really good opportunity. Our new networking is on June nineteenth this month. We're going to be hearing from the American Red Cross, their ready preparedness program. They're going to come and speak and Good Grinds is catering our lunch. So if you miss the ribbon cutting, you can get some there. And we'll be hosted at the Hampton Inn. And lastly, June twenty-sixth is the Tabitha's Way Fifteen Year Celebration. They're hosting a block party from six to eight PM. So you all are more than invited to come and participate. It's going to be a really good time. And I just wanted to shout out really quick, the Play On program is going for the summertime. If you guys are not aware of that, it's really cool program that is twofold. It incentivizes kids to get off their phones and get out in the community and visit businesses at the same time. So they do activities that are off their phone, blow bubbles, visit horses, you name it, it's on the program. And then they go to a business that's kind of correlated with that activity to redeem their token and then they get a bunch of prizes sponsored by local businesses if they get a certain amount of tokens. So that's called the Play On program. You can look it up. Colt Sampson with State Farm initiated it. It's in its second year and it's been extremely popular. We have three tokens people can pick up from the Chamber of Commerce and our doors are constantly rotating. So it's a really great opportunity for kids in our community. That's all I got.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thanks, Kathleen.
So many exciting things happening within our business community. And by the way, thank you for representing Spanish Fork with your yesterday's rodeo shirt, which is just a couple of weeks really away. So exciting times. I just have one more thing there this evening and that is this last weekend on Friday and Saturday evening, we had the the Little Miss Spanish Fork pageants. If you didn't know, there are two pageants. The first evening on Friday is for the the minis and the younger girls. That was actually this evening. You can see in the picture here. Thanks, by the way, Jack, for that. And then on Saturday evening, we we had the pageant for the older girls, the teens, pre-teens. And they were just a lot of fun and we had a great time. So many, so many girls participated and, you know, it's, you've got to be brave to do that. It takes a lot to get your talent ready and to all the all the components to, you know, get the courage to do that. And so I was proud to see so many of our our youth in, you know, in the city be involved and their families were there supporting them. And it was just a really great couple of evenings and yeah, lots of winners. And so definitely something I look forward to and a highlight and and thank you, Councilwoman Beck, for for joining us one evening. Yeah, that's, that's all I've got for now, Mayor.
Good. Very good stuff. Thank you, Councilman Took. Councilman Marshall?
Last week, the solid wasters we met passed the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. They also re-upped their commitment to the Utah retirement system for their employees. Good meeting. Corey represented the city on our, on my behalf, so I appreciate that, Corey. Thank you very much. Congratulations to the Spanish Fork Dawns.
Yes.
Right? That was pretty amazing. My, my wife had asked me, are the Dawns in the tournament? I'm like, ah, they're not very good this year. I doubt it. Turn on the TV, they win five straight, win the state championship. That was pretty amazing. Great to watch, very proud. Once again, I was out of the town, out of the, out of the state. That is, for all the high school folks out there, if you want to win a state title, wait till I leave. Because that's the only time apparently it happens, when I'm not here. But congratulations. But congratulations to them. It was a great win. Yeah, congratulations.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I echo that. The Dons, Maple Mountain High School battled, were, were in the semis with them. Then you had, you had some good Utah baseball going on for a while there. You have Salt Lake Community College going out and winning the Junior College World Series, and UVU being a little bit of a spoiler to some really good teams, too, and, and both those squads are made up of some good, some good Utah kids. So, so baseball in Utah is strong, not just here in Spanish Fork, but, but to go Dons and, and coming back from the twentieth spot to the first. I'll just echo what Councilwoman Beck said, too, about Memorial Day. Thank you, public, for coming. It seems to just get better every year, and Stoney and, and the crew that put it together, and Mr. Hughes that spoke, spoke was very good, too. So, thank you, everybody, for, for coming to that program on Memorial Day. I know it means a lot to the veterans, and it's another one of those ways that keep our community feeling kind of small, so it was good to see you all there. That's all I have. Anything else from staff or the council that we need to go over before the rest of our agenda?
Real quick, that date for that airport board breakfast is the twenty-first, eight AM.
So, it's coming up. You got three weeks?
Yep.
All right, twenty-first, Saturday morning. Okay, perfect. Takes us to our one-on-one agenda, the summer reading and library strategic plan.
Can I do just before, before Scott?
Yes, sorry, yeah, I'm skipping the agenda tonight. I apologize, staff reports.
Just a couple of, of things. Right now, candidacy declaration is happening. You can see on our city webpage, on their elections page, you can, you can check there. This is updated, I think, at the end of every day, individuals that have declared for candidacy, so people can watch that as it happens once a day, I guess. Both Dave and Corey, I think you had some items you wanted to follow up on from, or that you wanted to report on, the sewer treatment plant, open house. Dave, you had Quiet Valley Landscaping.
Um, I, I think we've shared the information, but we will have the sewer treatment open house. That will be June ninth at four to six o'clock. That was.
I think we got June twelfth.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Got my mind mixed up there. June twelfth, that's a Thursday. Four to six PM. We welcome the public down there, anyone who's interested to see what's going on. We are clean water testing, so this is before sewage is actually entering, so you can see in the water and see more equipment than maybe other times, so great time to come down and see what that project looks like, so.
Now's your chance, right?
Now's your chance. We'll welcome you anytime, Beck. If you want a clean environment, now is your chance.
Now's a good time.
Yes, now's a really good time.
Come see what you get for one hundred and twenty million dollars.
Yes, come see what that looks like.
You won't get the full effect without the full effect, but.
Cinder block, a lot of pipes, a lot of technology, but.
Love clean water out the back end.
Yep, yep. Mr. Dave?
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. Urquhart to help me with kind of blowing through some slides here kind of quick. Couple of weeks ago, we received a volume of emails that was unlike anything we've seen before, and I saw that the council was attached to at least a few of those. This isn't about a development, but about trying just to make sure people are on the same page in terms of the role that the city plays in certain situations that matter a lot to our residents. As we responded to the emails, talked to people, and just kind of got immersed in a conversation about a project and some improvements in that development, it became really clear that at least a lot of our residents don't understand what the city does. So, Jack, next slide. So, talking about landscaping, just to touch on it from three different perspectives, what we don't do, what we do do, and why the city's role is different today than it was, even just a few years ago. Things really have changed, and they've changed quickly. So, we're talking specifically about private landscaping. Most often, this is an issue in multifamily projects where there ends up being a homeowners association that takes ownership of improvements that are installed by developers, and likewise, the responsibility to maintain those. Those associations and those costs are paid for by residents of those developments. So, we are very concerned about the level of quality that's put into the installation of those improvements. And we're not just talking about shrubs and grass. We're talking about, about valves, sometimes pumps, irrigation lines, irrigation heads, everything that's required to make landscaping work. Big investment, probably anywhere from four to maybe eight dollars a square foot. And as you see projects that ultimately come before you, you see plans sometimes that are into the, the millions of dollars of landscaping, and that becomes more and more the case as more and more homes that get constructed are multifamily homes. So, this issue, it's, it's unavoidable relative to growth in the way we're growing. Another issue, street trees. I'll touch on that from a little different perspective, but let's just kind of keep rolling. Jack, thank you. So, the state law. On this issue, it's not entirely clear. I used to don't think it's written as well as it could be, but when it comes to, to private landscaping, this is what we extrapolate what that means from. Things are described in a private landscaping plan. Again, it's what I described a minute ago. It's what a homeowners association ultimately is going to be responsible to maintain. It's not maybe landscaping that's in a public right-of-way next to a development. That might be the responsibility of the city, and oftentimes it is. So, private landscaping, does that make sense? Any questions about? Let's move on. Next one. So, as opposed to that, it's public landscaping. Again, this would typically be landscaping in a public right-of-way, or maybe it's a park that might be adjacent to, or even sometimes surrounded by a private development. Two different things, private versus public landscaping. So, when it comes to private landscaping, these are really the only two things that we do today. So, a big project, and I might continue to use Whispering Pines, project recently approved by the council up the mouth of the canyon, many acres of private landscaping in that development. We require developers to provide a plan for that landscaping. And we do that for a handful of reasons. Two of the bigger reasons are because we have landscaping standards that have to be met, standards that involve both what gets installed and how it gets installed. By requiring those types of plans and making sure that those requirements are met, hopefully, we're setting some kind of stage to make sure that, in the end, the residents get something that increases in value over time. That's really the idea, and that they don't get burdened with something that's going to be in any way a problem for, for them as the owners of those improvements. So, we get the plans, and then at some point during the life of the development, typically it's right before homes are ready to be occupied, we go and inspect to see what's done. And typically, that involves us generating a list of things that either aren't finished or that need to be corrected. There's not a lot to that in the role that we play today. We require a plan. We make sure that that plan meets the city's standards, and then we do an inspection. What we don't do, let's talk about that. Going back to the state law and what we're allowed to do today, we issue certificates of occupancy, which means we allow new homes to be sold to new property owners from the home builder to the property owners. That generally doesn't happen until this certificate, we call it a certificate of occupancy, gets gets released to the home builder. And we do that whether the landscaping is done, done right or not. And I'll follow up a little bit more on that in a minute. If you can go back one more, first another second, Jack. Thanks. That second bullet point there. Sorry, the next slide. There we go. So, in situations where homes are ready to be occupied, everything's done. We've done the inspections on the buildings. It's finished. Historically, if the landscaping wasn't done, we were able to require builders to give the city some type of financial guarantee, some assurance that, that anything that needed to be fixed would be. Oftentimes, at least for a number of years, that was twenty-five hundred dollars, typically for a townhome. Another project, sometimes it was more than that. So, not, not a, a small amount of money, but also we're not talking about tens of thousands of dollars per home. When we did that, that provided those builders with an incentive to finish the work. In each of these two cases here, we used to have great tools that helped us work with builders by having incentives in place for them to get things done the right way. Sometimes it was into the next growing season after residents moved into their homes. But at some point in time, things got done, and they got done according to the approved plan. We can't do that so much anymore. And Jack, you can go. So, what's different today than used to be? Next slide, please. Two thousand and twenty-three House Bill four zero six passed, and again, Jack, everything changed. So, today, we cannot withhold either a building permit or a certificate of occupancy if the kinds of improvements that we're talking about here aren't done. Can't. State took that away just a couple of years ago. It was a huge shift, and we realized very well as staff, staff from cities all across the state knew that this would make it very, very difficult for cities to play a role in making sure that residents ultimately got what was approved as part of a project's approval. Next slide, Jack. I, even down to, you know, something as specific as language here, calling out that we can't withhold certain things, and we can't require that financial assurance, which was a really effective tool. It allowed homeowners to be able to move into their homes, let's say in December, but it made no sense to do landscaping, not at all. So, you could postpone that to the next summer, but there was some, again, assurance that it would get done and would get done right. A House Bill four hundred and six took that off the table. Next slide, Jack.
Dave, could you pack up one before you go on?
Yeah.
The next sentence, yep, under four, unless landscaping improvements are part of a development agreement. So, if we entered in a development agreement that required the landscaping, then we could hold them accountable to it.
You're jumping to the end.
Oh.
Yeah, by the way, no, that's, I think a great observation. So, in terms of things that we can do today on this issue, I believe that's really it. So, and I know, well, Vaughn and I haven't talked about this. I don't want to put words in your mouth, Vaughn, but you know, there's, there's a certain distaste, I think, for doing development agreements unless maybe you really need to. So, there's kind of a bias against that, but on this issue, that's it. That's really the only way that you could kind of restore some of these opportunities that we used to have. Vaughn, I don't know. So, certainly in terms of something that's worth considering, that's the thing.
We don't do a lot of development agreements, though, right?
Yeah, typically, it's for bigger projects where they're, you know, again, Whispering Pines. We wanted to make sure that we had some, some things in place in terms of making sure certain improvements got done.
Yeah, bigger projects have more issues, more complexity, different needs, more consideration flowing back and forth between the developer and the, and the city, then, yes, we do them, but if it were just for a otherwise standalone project that meets all other requirements of our ordinance, just to do it for that, I don't know if we would do that. Not with the risk.
I believe, and you know, this is where Vaughn would correct me, he might, I think we could probably include some of the provisions that we used to have in our municipal code, maybe in a development agreement kind of a form, though, and just kind of mimic the way we used to operate. That's something I think maybe we should consider. Again, you know, rather, I'd say that's kind of on the private landscaping side where we're at. I'll circle back in just a minute, but street trees, we heard a lot about street trees as well. Quiet Valley, incidentally, is one of the earlier projects that was done after the city council approved a requirement to master plan developments, need to have a street tree plan, and the developers are responsible for getting street trees installed. This is different than what I was just talking about because street trees almost always end up in, at least the way I would define them, they go in the public right-of-way. So, the city ultimately owns that space. City owns the trees. We, we're, rather, we at least expect adjacent homeowners to maintain the trees and that type of a thing. So, we do have some tools at our disposal here that we don't have with other landscaping elements, but there also are a lot of challenges that come with getting street trees installed and cared for, particularly when they need the most care, which is when they've just been planted, when oftentimes, when lots are developed, there's not a home there, there's not water yet in the park strip, not someone there to make sure that the trees get established. And go to the next slide, Jack. I, you know, likewise, I, we, even with street trees being in the public space, we still can't withhold, you know, certificate of occupancy or anything like that if they're not installed. And Jack, lastly, this goes back to what I just referred to a minute ago, but just a few years ago. I would say Spanish Fork City upped its game in terms of requiring street trees, and we took some good steps forward in terms of helping to make that happen. The challenges still exist, and I'll just wrap, Jack, maybe with the next couple. Back to what Councilman Marshall pointed out a minute ago. If it's something that you'd like to see the city have more influence on when it comes to the private landscaping, development agreements really are the only way that we can go. And then lastly, so there, just emphasizing that, that development agreement language that, again, Councilman Marshall pointed out a minute ago. And then on the street trees, it really would take a group effort to do a better job with how we work with developers, and then new homeowners to make sure that street trees get installed and cared for. We have required developers to bond for street trees as part of their, their improvement bond, which is a financial guarantee that they give the city when subdivision plats get recorded that ensures that water lines, sewer lines, sidewalk, streets, everything like that gets installed. There's just a line item for street trees. You have a per-tree value that's assigned there. Timing is a huge challenge when it comes to getting trees installed. In my opinion, it doesn't make any sense to install a tree before a homeowner is there, and by the time a homeowner is there, typically, whoever the developer is at that point in time is on to their next project. And, you know, kind of managing that transition comes with some challenges. I don't offer that as any kind of an excuse, and I think these are things that certainly can be overcome, but it's not as simple as just saying, hey, developer, you need to get a two-and-a-half-inch caliber tree planted every thirty feet along a public street or that sort of a thing. So, that's maybe more than you wanted to hear, but kind of a high-level description of, again, you know, the things that we can and can't do, and a little bit about why we play the role that we do. I will say that I speak from the experience that I have with the conversations that happen among city staff all the time. We care very much about what our residents get. Purchasing a home, it's never been a bigger investment, and everything that comes with that. And particularly, I think when it's, again, kind of a multifamily environment where these things come into play, it's a big deal. They're big expenses, and, and the homeowners get saddled with those, so if anybody ever has any thoughts about how we should operate differently, we're all ears, but Spanish Fork certainly is not unique by way of. by way of, uh, having been forced to change how we operate as a result of the state law changing. Any thoughts or questions? Happy to take them or not.
Maybe the timeliness of it, Seth, do you want to give the thirty-second version of when we received these emails and where we were last week at a housing summit? And if the instruction we were getting was, uh, the way, the reason why I say timely is because it was like a mini-session of this is how much less control that we ought to give you over housing locally. So we can build housing. Uh, that was the message. We're five thousand into starter homes and the governor's goal is thirty thousand in five years. And basically what else can we remove to have that happen? And it's kind of a, an example that we showed a couple of people right there of the issue that you brought up is, this is part of it, but, you know, when, when, when there's not local control that was already taken away or not bonded for, because you can't bond for it now. Who else should the resident, uh, reach out to? But that's who they, that's who I would reach out to. And, uh, so it's a tough situation. I don't think Seth heard me call on him, but.
You don't what? Did you hear him call on you?
He doesn't have a thirty-second response to it. It's more like a.
Thirty minutes.
Yep, thirty minutes at least.
Anyway.
Any other questions for Dave on that?
Thanks for hearing me out. I really do appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for the explanation. It's a good reminder so that when residents do come to us and email us like they did, we, we know how to respond. So thank you.
And I guess come to us if there is development agreements, there's, there's things maybe we can do. But if there's not, it, you, we're, we're living with what we're living with. Okay, takes us to one oh one of Spanish Fork, which is the Summer Reading and Library Strategic Plan. Mr. Scott Aylott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Maybe before I jump into that, uh, to follow up on some of Kathleen's comments. Uh, for the Play On program, the library is a pickup location for one of the activities. So if you participate in the Summer Reading Program, you can come and pick up one of your, uh, tags at the library. And then for Tabitha's Way, uh, earlier this year at our annual work session, we talked about providing additional opportunities for residents or library patrons who have fines on their accounts to have amnesty periods or fine forgiveness periods. And so we're doing a second, uh, Tabitha's Way Food for Fines program for the whole month of June, uh, to help support their, uh, goal of getting fifteen thousand pounds of food donated this month through county libraries. So we are one of a bunch of county libraries or city libraries within the county that are participating. So bring your canned goods in. We've actually added toilet paper to the, uh, donation because they sent us a list of their hot, most needed items and toilet paper's on there. So you can donate a pack of, uh, four-pack of toilet paper and get some fines waived. Uh, I guess you could say you could get them wiped away at, uh, the library. That one was.
My gosh.
I couldn't, I just had to, right? Came to mind, had to throw it out there, so.
It's a one-two night.
Yeah. Anyways, so we'll jump into Summer Reading Program. Dale's not here. I was going to mention that in the city, we have a lot of awesome slides, right? And we expect that kids are fully engaged and having a great time on any one of our great slides at all of our wonderful city parks. However, there is one slide, we don't want our kids hanging out on the summer. We call it at the library, the summer slide. And it's, uh, the summer slide is the sense that, uh, children, grade school age, uh, that over the summer months that don't actively read and do other things to kind of keep up on what they learned during the previous academic year, typically will lose a significant portion of that, you know, knowledge gained, experience gained over the school year during the summer. And the first month of school in the fall is spent getting kids back to where they were the previous school year. And so we don't want that to happen. We want kids to be engaged in productive, uh, helpful things throughout the summer, like the Play On Program. Summer Reading Program's another one, uh, to keep kids engaged in things other than watching TV, playing video games, hanging out on their phone, that type of thing. So we do the Summer Reading Program every single year. It's a huge success for us. The summer for us at the library is our busiest time of year and we love it. Uh, we love seeing maybe individuals who don't use the school, the library during the school year because they're using the school library, come back for the summer months and participate in everything that we have going on. So this year's Summer Reading Program, we keep trying to just make it more simple and easy for patrons to participate. So we've got a bunch of different age groups. So for the children, really the goal is read a thousand minutes over the course of the summer. And you can easily do that by reading twenty minutes a day. Um, and we've got awesome prizes for kids to receive. We kind of make it a little bit easier for the teens, right? We want them to participate and don't want obstacles. So goal there is to read sixty minutes or six hundred minute, minutes, excuse me. And then for adults, um, and for any of these groups, you can listen to audiobooks as well, but read or listen to five books. We got a lot of great prizes, uh, for children. We give them a book that they get to keep, it's their own. Um, as well as some other fun prizes and prize drawings for all of the different age groups. We're, uh, excited. We typically do an end of summer party for everyone who, who participates. And this year it's on Saturday, August second. We do it after hours here at the library so that we can take over the whole building and have a lot of fun for those that participated in the Summer Reading Program.
Scott, since we're going to be talking about budget later, what's the budget for the program?
For the Summer Reading Program, um, I could get you a number.
That's fair, that's fair.
Yeah, I can get you a total number of what we spend on the Summer Reading Program. It is by far our largest program of the year. Um, we really do our best throughout the year to maintain, um, lean budgets for our programs. And, uh, we do so by buddy or duplicating a certain program, right? So our story tots, our, our puppet story times throughout the week, we'll duplicate those, right? So that we can keep costs and expenses, expenses low, so that we can focus on the Summer Reading Program. Another thing that we do is we get a lot of businesses that will donate to the Summer Reading Program. A lot of our grand prizes that we get aren't ones that we purchase, they're donated from local business. Um, and so we're really appreciative of those businesses that donate to the, to the Summer Reading Program that allow for us to incentivize the program by providing some additional, uh, prizes and giveaways. How can I sign up? Uh, there's a couple of different ways. Obviously come into the library. There's a QR code up here, so you can see a list of all of our events going on. Any of our events you come to, you can sign up at the event. You can also sign up by scanning the QR code to the left. Go to Spanish Fork dot Beanstalk, Beanstack.org. Or you can download the Beanstack app on your Apple or Android device and track your reading, track your minutes all within the app. And track the reading and minutes for your kids as well. Uh, any questions about Summer Reading Program? And I'll get back to you, Councilman, uh, about the, uh, budget for Summer.
In rough numbers, it's probably about ten grand for what the summer program is.
Sweet.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're a great investment.
It's.
It's a great investment.
Yeah, it's blended inside of, generally I think it's blended inside of your children's program budget. Is that right? And so you might have some in the teen, but generally it's on inside of the children's program. The total budget for children's programming is twenty grand. And probably about half of that.
Goes to Summer Reading.
Is the summer program, based on what I remember historically, but does that feel right or close to right?
And collectively among all of the age groups, we get between fifteen hundred to two thousand people that participate over the summer.
Very cool.
So it's a worthwhile program for families to participate in and get them doing something else during the summer, so. Um, second thing to talk about tonight is our Library Strategic Plan. So at the library, uh, we like to be forward-thinking. We like to not necessarily just shoot from the hip, but have an idea and a plan on what our goals are for the next three years. And so we have a three-year strategic plan that we do. Uh, and so right now we're in the planning process for the upcoming strategic plan. We sent out a survey last week and I think within twenty-four hours, we had eight hundred and fifty responses. And we're now over a thousand, so library users are, uh, if you need a good, you know, pool to pull from for ideas, they are very responsive and passionate about the library. And we're getting great feedback on things that we can improve on in any one of these different categories, right? Our facilities, collections, services, programs and technology. And so we'd encourage residents to participate. Give us your feedback, even if you're not a library user. Let us know what we could do that would make you want to use the library. Or just let us know why maybe the library is not a good fit for you. And that helps us be a little bit better every single day and establish goals that aren't necessarily my staff's goals, because we feel like we have a good pulse on what the community wants and what good library services are. But it's not my library and it's not my pay, my staff's library. It's the Spanish Fork Library. So our patrons and our community feedback is, is just as important as we develop the strategic plan. It helps incentivize, clearly not that we need much incentive, you know, incentive for pa- uh, patrons to participate. But we've got a fifty-dollar gift card to Poppy Books, the local bookstore, that if you participate in the, uh, Strategic Plan Survey, you can enter to win a gift card and go help support a local business. So any questions on the strategic plan? Cool. Any other questions about anything library-related while I'm here?
Who serves in the library right now? Is it you?
I am. Yeah, they're doing a great job. It's a fun time of year to be a part of it.
Yep, library's always a great place, so.
I'm taking my grandkids tomorrow morning to the reading program at, you offer it at ten and eleven with the puppet, the dragon Barnaby.
Dragon Barnaby, yep, our library mascot for storytime. And he had a guest appearance at Studio Chatter a couple of weeks ago.
I was so impressed. Barnaby sat right next to me in the interview and I, I was sold. I'm going to go visit him tomorrow.
We have really stepped up our game, I think, uh, compared to where we were maybe five years ago at the library. We were very much the learner, right? Now I'm thinking Star Wars, right? Darth Vader and Obi-Wan. I was but the learner. Now I'm the master. We are the master at the Spanish Fork Library. And, uh, five years ago, we were out really learning as much as we could from other libraries and we still do that. But now we have libraries coming to Spanish Fork to say, what is the Spanish Fork way? How do we make our library services, programs, facility like what you have here because it's unmatched? So we're really proud of what we do and Barnaby's just a little bit of the magic that we do there in our program. So a little bit of the force, I guess I should say. Okay, well, thank you, Mayor and Council for your time. I really appreciate it.
Scott, you knocked it out of the park. Way to go. Thank you. Thank you for the library and thank you for the, the plan and keeping our kids smart through the summer. That's good stuff. Okay, takes us to item nine on our agenda, the consent items A and B. Anybody have any questions for the minutes and resolution improving, approving in our local agreement? If not, entertain a motion for the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. Takes us to our public hearing for tonight, Mr. Jordan Hales. We'll talk about the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget.
The budget was presented a month ago in the first council meeting in May. Uh, if you go to the next slide, Jack, here's the, the timeline of things. Uh, so that budget has been accessible on the city's webpage, Spanish Fork.gov. We have a copy in the city manager's office. Uh, I know we have one in this building as well. Tonight we have the budget public hearing and then two weeks from tonight, uh, hopefully we'll have an approved budget.
Jordan, the second bullet. How many, um, works, what do we call those things in?
Work sessions.
Work session? Thank you. It's late. Um, how many work sessions do you think we talked about the budget?
We have two work sessions. We have a work session before each council meeting, so two a month. Um, and I think pretty much for the last three or four months, every work session, we've talked about the budget.
Give us an exact number and give me two minutes.
Yeah, we're in the, we're in the six to nine range. Yeah.
I was trying to, in my head, build a timeline, how long we've been talking about the twenty twenty-six budget.
Yeah.
How often, so, thank you. This is, this is helpful.
Yeah, as I was looking at this, I was like, I think I need to tweak some of the, the wording here that talks about the council reviewing the budget. And I don't think that's quite accurate because you guys have had such a hand in giving this, uh, direction and vision for the priorities of the budget.
Yeah, I would say that at this time, it is not staff's budget or the council's budget. It's our budget, right? We've, we've had a hand in it. It's definitely not a review process. It's direction, guidance.
Right.
Priorities.
And now it's in the public's hands and tonight's their opportunity to come and speak to that.
Excluding the work session that was three days long?
Yes.
So Jordan. Jordan, we had a question come up recently asking why staff presents the budget rather than mayor and council presenting the budget. Shane just brought up the work sessions and different meetings that we're in where we discuss it. You as a full-time city employee, finance director, how often would you say as part of your job is reviewing, preparing and looking at the budget as the?
I am in the budget e- every day to some extent and most hours I'm in the budget at least once an hour. Um, it seems like so. I am constantly in the budget.
So you're fairly familiar with the budget and you feel comfortable presenting and speaking on the budget?
And the budget has some unique, um, especially government accounting has some unique, uh, technical things that, uh, myself would know that you guys wouldn't quite know yet.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, um, wanted to touch upon things that have changed to the budget in the last month. And really budget amounts haven't really changed much. Um, there's been some immaterial amounts, some insignificant amounts, um, some revenues that we've been able to adjust up in the general fund as we've seen. As we have one more month of data, we can see, okay, we can see we're going to be able to budget a little higher somewhere. One of the pages in the budget is donations and we actually had a request for a donation. Um, so, uh, Cedar Valley Volunteer Fire Department, um, sent out a request for donations. They're in dire need of equipment, um, and, uh, Chief Hales identified a piece of equipment that we could donate. Estimated roughly at, uh, twenty thousand dollars in value, um, this, uh, tinder pumper. Um, so I know Seth has been in contact with you all about that. Any questions on that? Seems like that's a fairly common practice in the, the fire world for those that, uh, have some piece of equipment to donate to those that are in need.
And I think it's important to note, this is a piece of equipment that's in regular the schedule, in regular schedule to go away. It's being dis, it's being surplus. The value that we identify there of a rest, a rough estimate of twenty grand is what we think we could get if we were to sell it. And, and we probably surplus one of these pieces of equipment. This is a five hundred, six hundred, when we bought it, five or six hundred thousand dollar fire truck, uh, that we bought probably twenty years ago. Today, this piece of equipment is probably eight hundred thousand to a million dollars. And so to Cedar Valley, it's a pretty significant gift.
That, uh, they're located just west of Eagle Mountain.
Can you go west of Eagle Mountain?
Yeah, there's something there, Cedar Valley.
It's Cedar Valley.
All right, the other item, um, is adjustment to the proposed landing fee at the airport. Um, after, uh, Airport Board had discussed this, uh, proposed that the first landing each day for the lowest aircraft weight class only be complimentary for base aircraft and for transient aircraft. Um, that self-check-in on the landing fee webpage. If you go to the next slide there, Jack, this is, so this landing fee is a new concept, uh, new proposed fee. And you can see, um, two dollars for the lowest weight class, um, five dollars for the next, and then it, uh, those heavier aircraft have more of an impact, so they pay more. But any questions or comments on this proposed fee and this adjustment?
With the airport, and Jesse, maybe you can answer this. With the airport being as busy it is and continuing to get busier, what's defined or how do you define a landing? Cause I know they do a lot of touches. Is that?
Gotcha. So a landing is anytime the wheels touch the ground.
Okay.
One of the things that people do is something called touch and go. You touch and then I guess you, you go back up. And I get, I think when you're learning, uh, to become a pilot, that's something you're practicing often.
And I think just to, to talk to this maybe a little bit more is one of the things that we've discussed ad nauseam is that to be a good steward of those that are, are patrons of the, or that are paying, uh, for usage of the airport and also to make our airport an attractive airport. We wanted to make sure that those that are just coming in for a one-time, you know, landing or they're, you know, hobby, um, pilots that are coming in, going from our airport, that we're giving them an opportunity to have that one free kind of built into their lease price, I guess you could say. But then if we're paying for usage, you know, more than that, it's usually, you know, the more, that's where the fees are coming in. Thank you to Christian and, and Cory, the team that's worked on this, because it's been, uh, a long ride to get to this point.
Any other questions on the, this landing fee? Any other questions on the, this landing fee? Any other questions or comments or things that you want to bring up with, in regards to the budget? Okay, this is all I have and we'll see if we have any comments.
Thank you, Jordan.
See what Kathleen has to say.
Thank you, Jordan. Appreciate that. And like what was already touched on here, this isn't the first time that we've went over the budget in this public meeting on the dais up here, but, but other, other meetings, council meetings and certainly work sessions throughout the year. So appreciate Jordan's good work, staff's good work as well. Well, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for the budget now, if somebody wants to make that motion.
A move that we go into public hearing for the budget?
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for the budget. Anybody from the public that would like to speak about the budget? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Out of public hearing for the 2026 budget. Any discussion, council up here, questions, comments?
Mayor, just wanted to note and put on record that at this point in the bubble, in the public discussion of the budget, I have personally not received any emails or communications with questions from the public asking about the budget.
Okay.
Me either.
You don't.
Neither do I.
Are we, are we gonna make a motion to approve the budget tonight?
That's not it.
You can. We wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it. Yeah.
It was just to get public comment on that budget?
Yeah. I, I, I think that gives us two more weeks. If there's a change, we can, we can put it in there, you know, based on revenues coming in or higher or lower, but. If you wanted to approve it tonight, you could. You've met the legal requirements associated with the budget preparation. Vaughn would like, would prefer a resolution anyway, so I would say, simple answer, no.
All right, so then two weeks from now, we have a resolution. It won't be a public meeting.
It won't be a public hearing.
All right, it'll just be new business and we'll approve. Okay? Or deny?
But that goes right, that's a good point to make there. Well, it was two weeks ago that we talked about the tentative budget and said, here's the tentative budget. Discuss, you know, anybody reach out to us, discuss it. Any questions? Is there material, like you said, material changes from the tentative budget tonight?
There are none.
Yeah.
I also think allowing the public hearing to take place now, and then that gives you two weeks if there were comments, to act upon those if you suffer, right?
Yeah.
I think, just, let me editorialize a little bit. Is that okay, Mayor?
You bet.
Stop it. Let's see. I like this process that we've gone through. Started January with our mid-year training, three days. Eighty percent is budget conversation, priorities, direction, all the things that we want staff to look at, what they would like to see. Then we're six months of discussion, updating and back and forth and squeezing and saying no to things and yes to things and all of the things. It's been really, really good. I think what would be really great, Jordan, we get through this cycle and sometime this fall, lay out a schedule that we can show the public for how to, how we're gonna get, how the next council is gonna get to the 2027 budget. Super upfront, we're gonna talk about it here, we're gonna talk about it these things, we're gonna talk about it.
Yes, pretty much the same process every year, so it's something.
It shouldn't be hard.
We could create a webpage that displays the, the budget timeline and that process of creation and what goes into it.
Trying to get just another sense of transparency on this. Because it is, there's no possible way you could do all of that in a meeting right behind, up here and have that kind of conversation. It would not be productive. So you take six months to do it and six months to do it right and go through all the, all the process there. It would just be good to say, hey, this is how we're gonna do it. If you want to join, come on up. Come on in there and have the conversation with us and watch this debate and, and prioritize, so. It's, it's a task and absolutely I agree with Councilmember Euler that you're the right person to do it. You need that background. You need that, that, really that acumen from a government budgetary perspective. The terminology is so different at times on, on how you account for these things. So I appreciate the hard work and staff has done incredible job of getting to the point where we can put it out to the public and get comment on it. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Perfect. I will say, before we go to item B in the enterprise funds transfers that I think Jordan will talk about here, th- this budget, I think if public, it's, it's on our website, you can still see it and follow it along as, as it's a working budget through the fiscal year and, and those income and expenses are, are tallied. But I think the priorities ring true through this budget of public health and public safety. So you're gonna see that, that I think the council and, and staff prioritize that stuff and, and not that it always isn't a priority, but that's, that's where, that's where quite a few expenses were made in, in public health and public safety. So again, appreciate everybody. Appreciate everybody involved in working it to this point.
Mayor, just wanted to add, and you've, you've mentioned this often in the past, this time of year when we're talking about the budget. One thing very different about a city budget, municipal budget compared to what can get very frustrating sometimes with the federal budget is that with the city budget, we're required that for every dollar coming in, there's a dollar going out. It's, it's a balanced budget. We don't spend more than we're able to bring in on a city level. That's why we have to make cuts and analyze it and, and go through this process to make sure that, that we're not overspending what we have coming in. So thank you to Jordan, city staff and everyone who's put in the time and the work to make sure that, that we've got a balanced budget.
Perfect. Thank you. Jordan, you want to speak to the enterprise transfer funds next? This is a public hearing as well, and I think this speaks to the transparency process of, of the budget as well.
Councilman Euler, I don't know if you noticed that you missaid that. You said for every dollar coming in, you have to have a dollar going out. I think that's how my wife, that's how my wife operates.
She's watching.
Glad you corrected me because I didn't notice, as I said, that's the other way around.
She's not watching.
I'll let her, I'll let her know.
That'd be a fun way to budget, though.
I'll let her know to look on YouTube and watch what you said.
I had Jack pull up our May newsletter. The fourth page of our May newsletter is this notice to city utility customers. We've been sending out this notice for a handful of years now. I don't know if we're somewhere between the five to ten range. Ten to fifteen years ago, a law was passed that said if you want to take funds from an enterprise fund and transfer them to another fund, you have to notice that. So this notice is to meet that state law requirement. So this went out to people a month ago, letting them know about the public hearing that is taking place right now. So we are transferring just a, over two million dollars between, from these funds, the water, sewer, power, solid waste and broadband fund. Yeah, and then also from the power fund, some funds going to the debt service fund that helps make a payment for the Justice Center. Yeah, what this, the purpose of this dividend is to keep property taxes low. We get about five, just over five million dollars in property taxes a year, looking at just over two million dollars into the general fund from these enterprise funds. Yeah, so if you didn't have this and you still need that two million dollars, you're looking at a forty percent or fifty percent increase to the city's property tax rate to get that revenue a different way. Any questions or comments before the hearing?
Questions for Jordan before public hearing on this item? Thank you, Jordan. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for item B.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for fiscal year 2026 enterprise funds transfer. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here on B. These are again, a page, page one thirty-four that you've seen in the budget document as we've discussed and debated and built it. Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion for item B.
There's no motion.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. Takes us to eleven, new business, resolution approving Salem File Vine Interlocal Agreement. Should we come back to it?
Yeah.
We can, we can go to twelve, adjourned to redevelopment agency. I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we adjourn from city council to redevelopment agency.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in RDA meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Motion made by Chairman Beck.
Second.
Seconded by Chairman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right, new business for the RDA is the fiscal 2026 budget.
There have been zero proposed changes to that budget since I presented it a month ago. Thank you.
Approved.
Okay, no motion, just, but it does.
We need a public.
It's saying a public hearing?
Yeah, we need a public hearing on them.
I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for the RDA fiscal 2026 budget.
So moved.
Motion made by Chairman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Chairman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go back out of public hearing.
Move to go out of public hearing.
Motion made by Chairman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Chairwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here. No changes on this since it was presented. Any questions? Okay. Do we want to go back to city council before LBA or should we go to LBA? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go to local building authority.
So moved.
Motion made by Chairman Took.
Second.
Seconded by Chairman Carden. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in local building authority. LBA consent items, the minutes of five, six, twenty-five. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Chairman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Chairman Euler. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
LBA fiscal year 2026 budget. Anything changed here, Jordan?
Zero changes here. Thank you.
Any questions about the fiscal year 2026 budget? I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Move that we go on to public hearing for the LBA budget.
Motion made by Chairman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Chairman Carden. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Public hearing on the LBA. I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Chairman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Chairman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here on the 2026 LBA fiscal year budget. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to reconvene to city council.
Move that we go back into city council.
Motion made by Chairman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Chairman Marshall. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're back to council meeting and back to item eleven A. Resolution approving Salem File Vine Interlocal Agreement.
Thank you for adjusting the agenda. This agreement we have with Salem is for them to help share the cost in the attorney case management and case filing software that we have. They, out of the seven licenses that we have, they will pay for two of those and that will help us to pay for that expense. Any questions?
Pooling of resources.
Right, right. Otherwise, they would have to do their own startup, their own case build and, and it would be a lot more expensive.
Any questions for Vaughn on this item? If not, I'd entertain a motion for item eleven A.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving Salem File Vine Interlocal Agreement.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall. Roll call vote, Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Eleven A is approved. Takes us down to nineteen. We have closed session. Anything that needs to become before this body, before we adjourn to closed session? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move to adjourn to closed session, or closed meeting to discuss purchase, exchange, release of real property and strategy sessions to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation in the Explorer Room.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for joining us.